Call this meeting to order, so I'll call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Conklin, we're starting with you if possible. If not, we can come back. Okay, Alder Curry? Here. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Lemer?
Here.
Vice President Martin?
Here.
Alder Miyazi? Still don't see him. Alder Vervier?
Here.
Alder Vitterver?
Here.
Alder Rahalier?
Here.
President Abbas?
Here.
Alder Alboras?
Here.
Alder Benford? I see you're here. Thank you. Alder Benford is here. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Thank you. And Alder Miyazi? Still don't see him, but I will mark him if he comes in. Madam Mayor, we are quorum.
Thank you. Can we have the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just give my usual reminder that we are all here to do our best for the city and that we appreciate kindness from all concerned and ask that staff, members of the body, and folks that are with us to do public comment refrain from using any profanities. Our first item is suspension of the rules. President Abbas?
Motion to suspension of the rule, 2.04 Order for Businesses, 2.05 Introduction of Businesses, 2.24 Ordnances, and 2.25 Resolutions for Items Sold as it made it on the agenda.
No. Alder Carter, can I call on you for seconds until Alder Martin reaches her computer?
I'm here.
Oh, you're able. Okay.
Yep, I'm seconding.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Martin. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules. And we'll come to our honoring resolutions. Item one is Legisstar 68111 in honor and appreciation of the distinguished life and service of former Secretary of State Colin L. Powell. And I will assume that this is moved by Alder Carter and seconded by Alder Harrington McKinney and turned to Alder Carter for the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Colin Luther Powell was born to Jamaican immigrant parents on April 5th, 1937, in Harlem, New York. And whereas Mr. Powell attended the City College of New York, joining the Army Reserve Officer Training Corp., ROTC, and graduating with a Bachelor's of Science degree in geology in 1958. Whereas Mr. Powell served two decorated combaters in Vietnam from 1962 to 1963, and from 1968 to 1969, receiving a Purple Heart and a Soldier's Medal for his actions. And I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Whereas Mr. Powell received a Master's in Business Administration from George Washington University in 1971, became Special Assistant to the Deputy Director of the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, in 1972. And whereas multiple troop assignments throughout the and served multiple troop assignments throughout the 1970s. And whereas Mr. Powell became Senior Military Assistant to the United States Secretary of Defense in 1983, served as National Security Advisor beginning in 1987, and was named as both Commander in Chief of the Army Forces Command and Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff in 1989. And? Whereas before his retirement in the military in 1993, Mr. Powell's time as Chair coincided with the end of the Cold War, the invasion of Panama, the Persian Gulf War, and the 1990s Balkan Wars, and resulted in the most significant recognition, reorganization of American military structure since World War II. And?
Whereas Mr. Powell was awarded a President Medal of Freedom in 1993, helped negotiate a peaceful transition of power in Haiti in 1994, launched American Promise, the Alliance for Youth in 1997, received the Silvana Steyer Award in 1998, was presented with the Thomas D. White Defense Award in 1999, and served as the 65th United States Secretary of State under President George W. Bush from 2001 to 2005. And whereas Mr. Powell's life and work, serving as the nation's first Black National Security Advisor, Chairman of the Joint Chief of Staff, and Secretary of State, among other accomplishments, has broken barriers and been an inspiration to Americans of all walks of life. Back to President Carter. Alder Carter, sorry.
Now therefore be resolved that the City of Madison Common Council and Mayor on behalf of the people of Madison express their deep appreciation to Colin Luther Powell for his significant contribution to American and international military strategy, politics, and public policy. Be it finally resolved that the Common Council and the mayor honor his memory and accomplishments, and extend to his family their appreciation that all Mr. Powell has given to the American public.
Thank you all. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution. We have no petitions or communications. So, and we have no early public comment. So we will move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Abbas?
At this time, our consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listed for each item except number one item which have registrants wishing to speak, number two items which require an extraordinary roll call vote, and are not included on consent agenda by unanimous consent, and number three item which all the persons have separated out for discussion debate purposes. Agenda item number four and nine are public hearing items. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 55, legislative file number 67718, second substitute, amending the 2021 adopted Paul Division capital budget and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sales agreement between the City of Madison and Cherokee Park, Inc. for the city purchases of approximately of 22 acre located at southeast corner of North Sherman Avenue and Wheeler Road. Requires 15 vote. Agenda item number 57, legislative file number 67798, amending the 2021 capital budget for engineering Major Street to correct the budget to match funds received from the state LRIP program. Require 15 votes. Agenda item number 16, legislative file number 67855, a resolution amending the 2021 public health operating budget to accept $37,278.52 from the board operations of the University of Wisconsin system and create one FTE, Disease Intervention Specialist for HIV outreach, education, and testing. Agenda item part of consent agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Agenda item number 50, legislative file number 67282, approving a certified survey map of property owned by ESC Holding LLC located at 4217 Neptune Court. Required recommended action is to adopt under suspension of the rule 2.04, 2.05, 2.24, and 2.25. Then we have additional agenda item. Recommendation made from the floor. Agenda item number 97, legislative file number 67975, a title only authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement within county for the city use of non-congregate hotels, sheltering as part of the city effort to provide alternative to unsheltered homelessness. And City-County Homeless Committee recommended action is to place on file. Then item requested for reconsideration. Agenda item number 76, legislative file number 66949, amending section 33.134 of Madison General Ordinance to revise the jurisdiction of the Common Council Executive Committee.
Right. And we have one item with a registrant that we'll need to exclude. That's item 38. Are there any items that Alders would like to exclude from the consent agenda at this time? Or are there? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Okay, thank you, madam. Let's see. 34. 67731. 40. 67799. 41. 67824. 53. 67813. 63. 67912. 76.
Yeah, Alder, let me make sure that I've got that correctly. You are requesting exclusion on number, agenda numbers 34, 40, 41, 53, 63, and 76.
That's correct. And I'd like 40 and 41 for staff explanation if we can put both of those together.
Okay, we'll come to that when we get to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other items that Alders wish to exclude from the consent agenda? Alder Rahalier?
47. 67373.
Item 47 for exclusion. Thank you, Alder. Are any additional items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on today's agenda? Alder Vitterver?
I just need to disclose on item 54 that I'm an employee of the Department of Health Services.
All right, we'll note that. Thank you, Alder. Any further disclosures or recusals? All right, so then we have items four through nine, public hearing. Extra majority items as 55, 57, and 60. A correction on item 50 that it is in the third Aldermanic District, not the 16th. On item 97, the motion is to place on file. And then for exclusion, we have items 34, 38, 40, 41, 47, 53, 63, and 76. I will note that on item 46, we have one registrant in support not wishing to speak. And on item 65, we have one registrant in support not wishing to speak. Anything else on the consent agenda? If not, President Abbas, a motion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote. And that will take us then to item number three. I just want to note, this is a new item that has not appeared on our agenda previously, but it's under action that you took at your previous meeting. On future, this agenda and future agendas, there will be an item where we can check in on the format of our meetings. At this point in time, under item three, our plan for the rest of the meetings in 2021 is to remain in a virtual format. This is the time where you could affirm that or if you wanted to make a motion to change that. This is the item that you would do it under, and this will continue on into future agendas as well. So that at each meeting, we'll have a chance to check in on the format of our next meeting. And so just for clarity, at this point, the motion is to have, to meet virtually through the end of 2021 unless somebody makes an alternate motion. President Abbas, on item three, a motion, please?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item three. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? Alder Figueroa Cole?
Sorry, Mayor, that was not a question.
Okay. And then is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item three? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And we'll go then to our public hearings. First, on the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee, item four is Legisstar 67124. I will open a public hearing on a new license for Tokyo sushi. We have no registrants on this item. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to Grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. We'll move on to the report of the Ad hoc Redistricting Committee. And so item five is Legisstar 67816. And item six is Legisstar 67914. Is there any objection to taking items five and six up together? Seeing no objection, we'll take these items together. I will open a public hearing on amending sections of the MGO to update existing Aldermanic districts and amending sections of the MGO, excuse me, the Madison General Ordinances to update existing Alder Ward boundaries. On items five and six, we have one registrant in support available to answer questions. Justice Castaneda from District 15, and perhaps more notably, the Ad hoc Redistricting Committee. Are there questions for our registrant? Alder Carter, is that a question?
I don't have a question for the registrant. I wanted to know if we were going to go through these individually.
Yes, Alder, we'll have a presentation from staff and then we'll work through.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But before we get there, are there any questions for the registrant? All right, seeing none. We will close the public hearing and we'll turn to an overview from staff. Next. I believe Ben Zellers is here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know many of you have followed this process very closely and have been getting updates as well, so I'll try to keep this fairly brief. Myself, as well as other staff from the redistricting team are available to answer any questions that you may have. Quickly share my screen here. Okay. So, jump in the time machine a little bit. Just wanted to provide kind of a quick overview of how much things have changed for the past 20 years or so. So this was the map that was in place for Alder districts before the redistricting in 2011. So it was in place from 2001 to 2011. And then after that 2011 redistricting, things shifted. There was a lot of growth on the edge of the city. And so districts kind of had to grow largely from the inside out. Certainly downtown grew a bit as well, but on balance, there was a substantial amount of growth on the edge of the city. And then the proposal, the concept that's in front of you tonight is Concept 7A. You can see that concept here in the same color scheme. And this time around, we still had growth on the edge of the city. And, uh, this time around, we still had, uh, growth on the edge of the city, especially on the west side, some on the east side as well, but then grew substantially on the Ismus downtown and campus as well, so um, there were a number of districts that had to shrink because they were overpopulated and other districts that had to expand because, um, they didn't have the target population level. Um, so you probably have seen this map before. Um, this is a, a map of the districts that grew, uh, the most. Um, those are in the dark purple colors. Um, the districts that grew the least are in the lighter, lighter purple colors. And I would note every single Alder district added population. Um, it's just that some added at a much faster rate than others. Um, and so these areas outlined in orange, um, are the areas that, uh, had to expand their, uh, Alder boundaries, their Alder territory, um, to take on more population. And they had to gain that population from these areas that are in darker purple. And so, we had expansion to the west, um, expansion downtown in Ismus, and expansion to the east from kind of the near east side and near west side and the, um, south, uh, east side as well. Um, and then in addition to rebalancing, uh, Alder district populations, we also have to take a look at wards. And we need to split wards that are over four thousand in population and combine wards that are under a thousand in population. So the wards that are shown green are over that four thousand threshold, and the wards that are shown in red are under the one thousand threshold. Um, and mo- most of those wards that are in red are, uh, due to annexations, uh, that have occurred over the past ten years. Um, and so those are, uh, easily consolidated. Um, and so as many of you have seen before, uh, there are written criteria for Alder districts that the Redistricting Committee adopted. Um, and these are, uh, these five on the screen are, um, federal or state requirements that were reinforced by, uh, adoption by the Redistricting Committee. Um, so the criteria that they looked at when, uh, creating, uh, and reviewing uh, concepts for redistricting is that districts have an equal population. And they adopted a, uh, plus or minus, uh, five percent target from the ideal population of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. And I would note that, uh, the direction of the committee was to consider, uh, the town of Pop, Madison population, uh, as part of that calculation. Um, then also to enhance the participation of communities of color and communities prim- who primarily use a language other than English. Um, that districts be compact, be contiguous, and then account for communities of interest. And the Redistricting Committee had to, uh, decide on what communities of interest to focus on, and so these five, uh, listed no particular priority. Um, are neighborhoods and neighborhood associations, elementary school attendance areas, college students, uh, housing tenure, and income distribution. Um, and then the committee also adopted, uh, two criteria that aren't required by, uh, state or federal, uh, law, but also, uh, opted to look at using major roads and other physical barriers like railroads as Alder district boundaries if possible. And then try to ensure various Alder districts are exposed to future population growth. Um, one thing that we got many public comments on throughout the process, um, but was not taken into account by the committee or by staff and, and assisting the committee, did not take into account, uh, where current Alders live. Um, as far as equity and redistricting, uh, criteria, uh, for, uh, each of those required, uh, federal items that we had to look at was mapped for each redistricting concept. Um, and we went through, uh, ten plus, I think, uh, redistricting concepts. Um, and there was also a demographic table for each redistricting concept that broke down Alder districts, um, in terms of demographics. As far as Concept Seven A, uh, there are four Alder districts that are, uh, between thirty-five and forty percent population of color, um, and two districts that are forty-plus percent population of color. And two thousand and eleven, only one, uh, was in existence for both categories, uh, District fourteen on the south side. And I would note that the city's overall, uh, population of color grew at about seven percent rate, um, in between, uh, twenty-ten, twenty-twenty census, so, um, that was, uh, uh, growth, uh, population for the city as a whole. Um, there were alternatives, uh, many alternatives explored, uh, to various concepts. Um, for example, Concept Seven C was explored with some changes on the south side. Um, the committee opted to move forward with recommending Concept Seven A, uh, because it, uh, balanced, uh, the criteria pretty well. Um, uh, for example, Concept Seven C, um, retained a portion of, uh, District fourteen on the south side, but ended up splitting a, a neighborhood. Um, so it's up to the committee really to balance all of those criterias that I, I just described and making the determination on which, uh, scenario to recommend. Um, the compressed timeline, uh, for this redistricting process, uh, meant that there was less outreach, outreach and engagement than would otherwise have occurred. So certainly not as, not as much as twenty-eleven and not as much as I think the committee or staff or probably, um, all of you would have liked to have occurred, have occurred, but um, we're under this tight timeline certainly to, uh, get the, uh, redistricting settled for county supervisor races and um, on the other th- end of things, on the beginning end of things, uh, were limited by the late release of the twenty-twenty census data due to COVID. Um, for the, uh, engagements and feedback, we, we didn't, uh, track demographics of library attendees. We had, uh, as you may have seen, uh, library engagement, um, and outreach, uh, where folks could stop by libraries and, uh, review printed maps, provide feedback on printed forms. And also we had some staff office hours at some libraries as well to answer questions. Um, then we also had redistricting outreach, uh, meetings aside from the, uh, dozen or so redistricting committee meetings where we had a staff presentation, Q and A, um, as part of the engagement, uh, as well. Um, another one of the limiting factors for engagement is it, uh, tends to, uh, generate the most interest in redistricting once, uh, scenarios are released. Um, and so, uh, that kind of was another, uh, element of this compressed timeline as we didn't have scenarios released until, uh, early to mid-September. Um, and that's really what gets kind of the comments flowing, people thinking about redistricting. Um, we did meet with, uh, redistricting, uh, staff, did meet with DCR staff to review redistricting efforts and results. Um, talked about, um, some of the different scenarios, uh, the demographic analysis and, and things of that nature. Um, and so, really, uh, what you're voting on here tonight, um, this is a slightly zoomed-in version on, on some of the amendments. Um, but what you're, what you're voting on here tonight, um, over the course of two items are the wards. Um, and wards were realigned to rebalance population, as I mentioned, and uh, the new Alder district boundaries, um, as recommended by the Redistricting Committee. Um, and so the wards, ward amendments, um, which you've seen, and two memos that were published to Legisstar, the second of which was only provided earlier today due to some, uh, late discussions with county staff. Uh, wards are adjusted. Um, and some says, most of those, uh, ward adjustments are due to, uh, county requests to better align some wards with their, uh, county supervisor plan. Um, so really, all amendments except for amendments B, D, and K are needed to address county supervisor map reconciliation. So, uh, the cir- ones circled in green are, uh, the ones either proposed as, by staff as technical corrections or proposed by Alders for, uh, ward or Alder, uh, district adjustments. Then these ones, uh, circled, whoops, ones circled in orange, um, are ones that, uh, the county is hoping to see approved to help them realign or align their, uh, county supervisor, uh, district boundaries, uh, according to their draft adapted, uh, adopted concept. Uh, so looking ahead a little bit, um, new wards in Alder districts, um, under the resolution in front of you tonight take effect on January first, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, but having said that, uh, Alders, regardless of what district they may end up in, would continue to represent their current numbered district. On the next Alder election isn't until spring twenty-twenty-three, uh, but new wards will need to be used in spring twenty-twenty-two election, uh, for county supervisors. And then new wards and, uh, the ward map that you will be acting on tonight will hopefully be used to develop, uh, new state assembly and state senate districts, um, and Wisconsin's U.S. House districts. Uh, the state does have the power and authority to, uh, tell the city to create or modify wards though, so we'll have to keep an eye out for, um, that potential, uh, request. So with that, we'll turn it back over to, uh, the mayor and to you all, and, uh, we have staff available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben. Are there questions for staff at this time? Not seeing any, so Ben, I just want to make sure that I'm working off of the correct list for us to go through amendments. Um, I have a memo, uh, dated October twenty-second, but you say there's one from today that I should be looking at?
Yes, there's a second one, uh, dated today that was sent out this morning, um, that has, uh, a handful of additional amendments. So it's, um, posted on Legisstar. Um, I can call it up and screen share if that would be.
That would actually probably be quite useful, I would think, for us to work through. So let's, uh, start with, if there's no questions for staff. President Abbas, let's start with just the main motion, uh, to adopt items five and six.
Move motion to adopt, uh, agenda item number five and six.
Second.
It's, so moved and seconded to adopt, and then Ben, if you can make that a lot larger, uh, for us to see. Um, I think, uh, we need to just work through them in order.
Sure, and the, these are the, um, second set of amendments. Would you like me to start at the top, um, for the original memo?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
So we'll start with the, uh, memo from October twenty-second uh, and proposed Amendment A, uh, which changes, uh, districts five, thirteen, and fourteen. Is there a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, motion and second to adopt. Alder Carter. You're muted, Alder.
Is this time for discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I, um, oppose to Amendment A. The town of Madison, um, historically has been part of South Madison, even though it's another municipality. Um, the, the residents of the town of Madison, obviously, um, flow to and fro into South Madison and into their, their, um, into the town of Madison. When you take a sliver of self, of the town of Madison and pacifically lost city in Carver, Martin, which has a population of people of color in it, away from the whole town of Madison, which would be, um, Baroak's neighborhood, if we want to get specific, as they transition into the city of Madison, and we've had several, um, meetings with them, um, they want to be together. And they've been together, and they want to go through this process together. There is no reason why this was, um, sectioned out when at the last, uh, three meetings, I believe, of the, um, of the Redistricting Committee, uh, they leaned towards keeping this area together. I'd, um, want to urge, uh, our, our council, uh, my colleagues, not to approve, um, Amendment A. And not only that, they are so sectioned off or segregated from the bulk of District thirteen, that they still have to come into South Madison, uh, the Villager or, or, um, uh, or, um, uh, Madison College, or even the Catholic Multicultural Center, depending on where they decide to vote, that again, they're segregated from the bulk of District thirteen. These are South Madison residents. They should be together as a transition into the city of Madison. It'd be, um, easier for staff, easier for the mayor, easier for whatever Alder is elected in this area to be able to present a s- a single voice on how the transition is going or, or, um, addressing issues that the town of Madison might have with the transition. So I am urging, um, my colleagues to, um, not to approve Amendment A and to accept Seven A as it was voted on at their last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Evers.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'd, uh, like to just go back to the criteria that the planning staff informed the Ad hoc Committee, um, that they could be u- could use particularly the optional criteria to consider. Planning staff informed the Ad hoc Redistricting Committee that were practical. The committee could use major roads and other physical barriers, railroad, railroads and open space areas as boundaries. This amendment speaks to this practical matter of using a major road as a boundary to the north of District thirteen and a, and an open space as a boundary, an open space area as a boundary to the south. Now, the small triangle that you see up at the north of the proposed new boundary for District thirteen, bounded by Monroe Street, Randall Street, and Regent Street, is the only area north of Regent Street to be included in District thirteen. To the west, the parcels north and south of Regent are included in District five. To the east, from Randall Street to the East Campus Mall, all the parcels north of Regent are in District eight. And further east, from East Campus Mall to West Washington and beyond to the railroad tracks, only parcels south of Regent Street and its continuation on Prophet are in District thirteen. My amendment maintains Regent Street as a boundary in this section. I believe staff put the small triangle into District thirteen because District thirteen otherwise would be underpopulated. My amendment addresses this by placing the triangle back in District five, where it is now, and instead picks up two sections of parcels in and adjacent to the Arboretum, parcels that are currently in the town of Madison. The first section is bounded by three sides by the Arboretum itself and includes homes visible from Arboretum Drive. This section is sometimes referred to as Lost City because the Lost City Forest area is directly to the south of the neighborhood that includes residents living on Cobalt Street, Balden Street, Marshall Parkway, and Arboretum Drive. The term, as you may know, Lost City Forest refers to the area south of this neighborhood, which was part of a failed sub- subdivision known as Lake Forest. The second section includes residents along two parallel streets, Martin and Carver, bounded by the Gardner Marsh to the north of Carver and by the Southeast Marsh to the south of Martin Street. These residents share one primary element in common, and that's proximity to the Arboretum. The Arboretum surrounds nearly two-thirds of Lake Wengra. Including these parcels in District thirteen makes sense and that a community of interest is evident with respect to Lake Wengra and its natural surroundings. These residents more naturally belong in District thirteen and that they have a lot in common with residents in Dunce, Monroe, Vilas, and Greenbush, neighborhoods that are also identified by their proximity to and av- advocacy for Lake Wengra. Alder Carter offered an amendment to the Redistricting Ad hoc Committee, calling for District thirteen to be recognized as a Wengra watershed district, but to do so would split up a vital community of interest in the borough neighborhood and therefore was voted down. However, it makes sense for District thirteen to be recognized as a Lake Wengra district as that is clearly one of this district's defining characteristics. And I might add, in, um, contrast to what my distinguished fourteenth district colleague, uh, fourteenth district older colleagues suggest, uh, res- current residency in the town of Madison is not a a res- current residency in the town of Madison is not a community of interest. We realize that these residents have something in common. Yes, they are town of Madison residents. But if staff would put up on the screen the current town of Madison mapping, you will see that it's discontiguous, that there are parcels all over. There is a parcel all the way up near Maple Bluff, for example. To suggest that everybody who currently lives, if you could just scroll down and scroll up and see the part in Maple Bluff, is is just a misnomer to suggest that that being formerly in the town of Madison is a community of interest. While these folks may have some things in common, to suggest that they will always have something in common and that they won't be absorbed in fully into the city of Madison as part of the city of Madison is a misnomer. The community of interest really should abide by the criteria that was that was instructed to the ad hoc committee. This open space area of the Arboretum really makes a lot of sense and advocacy for uh the areas around the Arboretum. In fact, if you took, you could take the unpopulated area, if you go back to the seven A map, if you you could take the unpopulated area in the Arboretums that's currently in District fourteen and add that to District thirteen as well so that the Arboretum itself would have one order advocating for the interest of the UW Arboretum as well. And regarding the voting area, I disagree. I I think it's possible for residents to vote at the Arboretum itself, and I I would contend that staff could make that work. It is possible for folks to access the Arboretum uh Information Center on Tuesdays and vote on that day. Uh, it's not difficult to drive there on Arboretum Drive to get to the Information Center. It would be a perfect place to vote. So I I I think that this mapping more accurately reflects the the criteria that was given to the committee. It was discussed also with staff, and I brought it up in discuss discussions with uh those present and the re did members of the redistricting committee. You could ask members of the redistricting committees, uh, a couple of whom have uh sponsored this amendment. They weren't, this is not a foreign concept to them. Don't recall that I brought this up and discussed this as a possibility. So I I would ask my colleagues to please vote in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, Alder.
Uh, Mayor, can I rebut?
No, Alder, you can't. You can get in the queue again, though.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will um not be supporting this amendment. And the reason that I'm not going to be supporting is the criteria, um, and I'll say it again because we've heard it before, equal population, minority representation, contiguity, political boundaries, compactness, communities of interest, partisan outcomes, and other state rules. And the reason that I'm not suggest, I'm not supporting that is is that um um, and there was no consideration where alders live. Let me make that very clear. Uh, but specifically, uh, looking at um District one and District twenty, um, neighborhoods were split. Um, and communities uh with language barriers were split. Uh, communities of interest that did not necessarily speak English, they were split. And when I was working with staff and we tried to make this work, that it all came back to the uh redistricting committee voted for um uh um uh map seven. And that is what they put forward. That is what they supported. Um, and so to now take a look at changing that and enlarging it and changing it any way um is is it's not um uh it's not fair. And I'm going to use the where the word fair and the word equity because there were instances where um where there were splits. Um, and to now consider this after the committee has voted um completely on uh on item number seven A um is is to me out of uh out of alignment. Uh, because if you're looking at um equity, not even equity in terms of of um the um communities of interest, um, there was splits in communities of interest where language was a barrier. So those exceptions were noted, but they were not um they were not in consideration uh because of concept map number seven A. And that was the one that was fully supported. That was the one that was fully voted on. And that's the one that should stand in terms of our support and vote. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Okay, um, today my computer just decided, let's not work. Um, oh, question. Can we pull up the racial demographics map? Um, can staff pull that up? And can you zoom into the triangle? Um, that we're referring to in the eight in like District thirteen? Um, okay, so I brought this up during the final redistricting committee meeting. Um, as as a point that should be recognized, um, my, one of my previous colleagues um pointed towards the issues with major roads um in District thirteen, which they can speak to towards that district better than I ever could. Um, but I pointed this particular triangle where you see like the one eighty and ones and four seventy-five triangle area being proposed to move into District five. As my colleague pointed out, this is the only area of um the Regent Street Ted or um Regent Street Reconstruction on the north side that is included within District thirteen. As you'll see with, as you can see, given this map with the racial demographics, this is, this area is highly populated by people of color. Um, those that live in the Regent and Larkett Coal. Many of those are first and second year um football players or or people in UW Athletics, which we know is pred- predominated by people of color um who regularly time practice um at Camp Randall. What you can see is to the northwest side of this triangle. This triangle in reality should be included in District eight, but because of how big the population is, it's included in District five as it currently resides in District five. This is a much better scenario for those um six hundred and eighty odd people that um reside within this area. Um, especially because they'll be within a district um eh within District five where there are several undergraduate students um as well as graduates, and it's closer to where they um regularly go to school and practice. Um, and considering the election cycle, this particular area doesn't receive that much um public engagement during election cycles. They're um tend to be passed over. However, with having the District five alder in um representing this district, they'll have more public engagement. And instead of being exposed to um campaign messaging within uh District eight and District five and then going to to Election Day um and realize that they live in neither of tho- those districts, um, including them in District five will allow them to engage with um campaigns within District five that want to um advertise their um campaigns where the quick trip is um off of North Randall instead and just basically abate the issue of lack of public engagement with tho- within that area and make a more cohesive um and contiguous districts within this area. That is why um I am sponsoring this amendment and supporting it because um it it creates a more beneficial situation for those about seven hundred people um that live in in that area um open to arguments within on within the District thirteen and fourteen border. However, as I see it, um, it's important to be using major roads to um to help determine our map boundaries.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazaki?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to take my hat off first to uh city staff for all the work that they did. This was a very short timing in order to get um this map made. You know, to actually vote for any different map or any authorization, given the fact that we had time, very little time for even public engagement. I don't think we should make any authorization to any of these, to the seven A. We voted, as a member of the group, we voted for it. And a lot of engagement was time for people to engage was then. So I don't think that we should make any authorizations to this because it will be unequitable to the people that spent all their time meeting after meeting. Uh, city staff that made sure that all criteria uh was met. So I would not be voting for any authorizations or any alter of seven A at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Miyazaki. Alder Carter?
Thank you. We can talk about the town of Madison as a whole. Throughout the whole city, as we know, is scattered. But that would be foolish when this amendment specifically targets part of the town of Madison that is also known as South Madison. It's not talking about Maple Bluff. It's not talking about anything on the north side. It's talking about what's in South Madison. And that is the section, what's in South Madison that I am referring to and that I will not be voting for this amendment. We do have people of color, people who've, English is their second language, that is in this area. It may be not in the Arboretum proper, but that is in this area. The boundary for District fourteen and District thirteen, the borderline, was Wengra Creek. And it clearly crosses over that borderline to take a sliver of the population in District fourteen. I think it's a tragedy, and I think that um in the end we will all be responsible for this change, and I will not be voting for it.
Alder Evers?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, just briefly, again, um, there are portions of District thirteen that are certainly considered part of South Madison. Um, the the Truman Olsen Development Project is part of South Madison. Um, I'm a sponsor of the South Madison Plan to uh identify a district that is centered in Lake Wengra and that um regards the shared interests of those who wish to see a healthy Lake Wengra, who've who live on the very edge of the Arboretum. If you live on Carver Street, as you drive down Carter Street and look out your right-hand window, you're looking right into the marsh, the are uh the in the Arboretum. If you drive down Martin Street, you look at the Arboretum. Having representation that identifies and recognizes this community of interest of shared values and our natural heritage makes sense. All right, and and that's why these residents have much in common with the residents of Dunce Monroe, Vilas, and Green Bush. Uh, representatives of of those neighborhoods currently sit on a on a working group established to set up a Lake Wengra Heritage Plan. So I I'm, I I encourage you to vote for this amendment so that the that these residents also can join in this process of uh enhancing and advocating for the long-term uh um benefit of Lake Wengra and the area surrounding. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, no other Alders. Alder Vitiver?
Um, is it possible to ask a question of staff?
Uh, without objection, we'll allow Alder Vitiver to ask a question of staff?
Um, just that in today's uh memo, um, we were informed that that triangle region that Alder Bennett was referring to um needed to be in District five to be able to ma- keep it consistent with the Dane County Supervisors. So my question is, is if that triangle is moved out of thirteen and into five and the town of Madison pieces were not moved into thirteen, then would that impact the equivalence of population sizes for that district?
Yeah, I mean, uh, they're really linked for population balancing purposes, I would say. Um, it would be possible um if necessary to uh keep that triangle area in District thirteen and still meet Dane County's requirements. We would have to create a ward for that triangle, which is below a thousand population. Um, but um, you know, not ideal, uh, certainly, but um that is really kind of the contingency. Um, if this amendment doesn't get approved, uh, that we would have to undertake uh to satisfy some of Dane County's concerns.
Alder Wihilehe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to second, I was part of the committee for the redistricting. And I want to express my gratitude to the staff and the committee. And I want to echo or second what Alder Miyazaki have said. Uh, it was a very short time. It was very compressed. And it was really deliberately, uh, we took the time to deliberate and vote on one concept. And we voted on concept seven A, and tonight I'll not be voting for any amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas?
If if that's okay, can I also uh ask a question to Ben?
Go ahead.
Appreciate that. Uh, Ben, could you please explain, um, sorry if I missed that about the ward? Why we could not, I I you said it's not ideal condition to create a ward of under thousand, uh, thousand people. Why?
Um, well, a state state statute um instructs us to uh create wards that are between a thousand and four thousand. Um, and then also there's just the matter of administering um different wards. Um, it becomes more complex for the clerk's office the more wards there are. Um, and so um every ten years, as we um reexamine wards and are able to consolidate certain uh wards that are underpopulation, um, that makes things a little bit simpler for the clerk's office. Um, I won't speak too much on their behalf. Uh, I know we have a few uh clerk's office representatives here um that feel free to chime in if there are other um elements of that. But um those are the two uh main aspects that um that I would put um elements of that, but um those are the two uh main aspects that um that I would put out there.
So Ben, if my memory is correct, previous redistricting, we do have awards which are under one thousand. I mean, on the north side, we have ward which is uh even under two hundred people.
Yeah, so um many of those that are underpopulated right now um that existed right after the previous redistricting were uh I believe mandated by the state to be created um because they have the power to tell us to do that after we have otherwise settled on ward boundaries. Um I know Brian uh Grady is also on in the meeting. If he has any other background uh on that, certainly feel free to chime in as well. But I believe that was the main reason we ended up with several wards right after the last redistricting that were uh under that population, that thousand threshold.
So if ju- just last question, uh uh if we if this amendment does not approve, then we could still create wards. It's not illegal. That's that's what I want to know.
Um it's not, it's not strictly illegal. Um like I said, not not ideal. Um but if this amendment isn't approved, um I guess we'd have to look to the council to uh create a new ward for that triangle area to try to satisfy some of the concerns, as I said, of the uh the county um and their uh supervisory district plan.
Thank you.
I can just uh just jump in. Yeah, Brian Grady with the Plain Division. And so uh what's going on here is uh five and thirteen are currently at the low end of the population range. And so uh if if the triangle goes to five, then thirteen needs to gain population. Um but if this amendment's not not approved, as as Ben mentioned, this would be a a a smaller ward, a ward under one thousand. Um but we could uh the triangle be a ward under one thousand. We could chalk it up to um what's in state statute, it says you can create wards below a thousand in cases where you need to create equalized um in this case, alter districts. So we could create a ward for that triangle uh because it would help us equalize uh population in our in our alter districts.
I appreciate that information. Thanks, Brian.
Alder Evers?
A question for staff. I wonder if staff could bring up um the uh the map, the one that Alder Bennett had regarding uh the representation of people of color. And if you could scroll down to these two parcels that are the Lost City and these areas and see if they're how they look compared to the rest of uh the town of Madison. Are and even to the other parts of District thirteen, I think you'll you'll see that um contrary to what Alder Carter is saying, that there is not a large uh population of people of color in these two sectors. So this is not at all contrary to the criteria that were articulated and given to uh the ad hoc redistricting committee. So I just wanted to address that point. Thank you.
Thank you Alder Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I also served on the redistricting committee and I'm a sponsor of this amendment and the uh next amendment that we'll be discussing. Um the changes in both of these are minor and they do improve you know, how we meet the criteria as was just mentioned. The target populations for both uh District Five and District fourteen will be closer to the the desirable number under this amendment. Um and I I encourage my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue on Amendment A. Um anticipating request for a roll call vote. All those in favor of Amendment A, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Conklin?
Can you come back to me, please?
Yes, I can. Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Yes.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Lemmer?
Aye.
Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Alder Miyazi?
No.
Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Alder Wajilie?
No.
President Abbas?
No.
Alder Alboras?
No.
Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Bennett?
Yep.
Was that a yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alder Carter?
No.
And Alder Conklin?
Uh aye.
Eleven ayes and nine nos.
With eleven ayes, Amendment A passes. And we'll move on to Amendment B, which involves changes to Districts three and seventeen. Uh if I can get a motion, please?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh on Amendment B, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Alder Foster?
Mayor, uh yeah, just real briefly, this is uh another, as Alder Lemmer Lemmer mentioned, kind of minor um amendment adjustment. Um also just wanna point out that this was one that was actually not taken up by the uh redistricting redistricting committee. Uh there was some procedural confusion on it, so they really just recommended that we do, we did take it up as a council through the amendment process. Um I I proposed this amendment uh because I'm currently representing the um proportion of the area that's impacted here. And what this basically does is just uh removes one division of a community of interest. So it's the Ridgewood Neighborhood and um the current seven A version has a small area of that neighborhood that would be split off and be on uh District Three rather than with the rest of the neighborhood in District Seventeen. Um and as you see, the um Alders of District Three and Seventeen um are in support of this as well as as sponsors. And I think it's a very straightforward and logical improvement. So I encourage everyone to support it.
Thank you Alder. Is there any further discussion on Amendment B? Alder Halverson?
Thank you Mayor. Just real quick, um the District Seventeen is a real challenge because of the growth that we've experienced. And so um in trying to trying to get this to work properly, this is this is the best that we could come up with. So I know it's not ideal for a Mayfair area necessarily, but it is the best that we could work out. So um I'll be supporting this.
Thank you Alder. Any further discussion on Amendment B? Right, seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Amendment B? Alder Wajilahi?
I'll be voting no for all amendments. Thank you.
Right, so uh Alder, is that a request to be recorded as voting no on all of them?
Yes, thank you.
Right, uh we will record Alder Wajilahi, please, as voting no on all of the amendments tonight. Alder Curry?
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to ask for the same consideration to voting no on all amendments.
Uh Alder Curry will be recorded as voting no on all further amendments. Alder Miyazee?
Yes, I'll be doing the same too for the simple fact um being consistent with what I raised earlier. Because of simple fact that the matter is, we gave a chance for the public to to engage. And with the short time that we had, I'm just staying consistent with my vote. And no matter what um we're doing tonight, we definitely have to have uh community engagement, which we did. So we cannot do things on the fly. I don't believe in this process. Thank you.
Uh thank you Alder Miyazee. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh thank you Madam Mayor. Um I also want to be recorded as no. Um specifically uh because it vary it it varies from what the committee um uh voted on and um the the privilege of coming back and making the amendment is a privilege that can be exercised. But I am absolutely voting no against any amendments to change the Concept Seven A.
Right, Alders, I I will respectfully point out that there are a number of technical amendments here that have been requested to uh harmonize with the county's proposal. This is part of the normal redistricting process. We do this every ten years. And while I understand that there are some substantive amendments uh including items A and B uh that were not requested by the county, uh I'm you may want to clarify the principle for yourselves. Uh but at this moment, we have four Alders that wish to be recorded as voting no on all items. Unless there's further objection, I uh Amendment B will pass uh with a sixteen to four vote. Alright, seeing no further objection, Amendment B is adopted. Then I'd like to suggest uh that amendments and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, please, but amendments C, D, and E look to me like they've all been requested to harmonize with the county's maps.
Um D uh was uh something that um was requested by uh Alder Foster just to revise uh a ward boundary line. Um so that wasn't a county item.
Alright, thank you. So we'll work through those uh separately then. So then on item Amendment C, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment C. Are there questions for staff? I'm sorry, which uh impacts wards one and two? Seeing no questions for staff, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion with the exception of the four Alders who have already spoken, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Carter? Alder Carter?
I will be voting no.
Right, uh we'll record Alder Carter as voting no on Amendment C. Unless there's further objection, uh Amendment C will pass on a fifteen to five vote. And that takes us to Amendment D. Uh which regards changes towards fifteen and sixteen. President Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment D. Alder Foster?
Um this again is a a fairly minor uh change. This is just for the ward boundary, so it doesn't care um which alter district anyone is in. Uh but historically, the Eastmoreland neighborhood has all been one ward. Uh with population increases, it is um I think up around thirty-five hundred right now, so it's still within the population limits and doesn't need to be split, but uh the clerk's office recommended that we consider to put it into two wards, just to help facilitate election processes. I support uh support that. Um but the amendment just simply shifts where we're drawing that line and uses the railroad tracks, which is a uh from much more um evident um separation within the neighborhood. And I expect that it will really help aid communicating with residents where they need to go to vote. Um the as proposed, previously used some very minor streets and I think would have led to a number of folks going to the wrong polling places. Um so that's that's what this amendment does and would ask for your support.
Thank you Alder. Is there any further questions or discussion on Amendment D? Seeing none, is there any objection? Uh excuse me, Alder Miyazee?
Mayor, I'm just wondering, what is the use of the committee if we're gonna make? I I heard what you said, so I'm just trying to uh get clarification from you specifically on uh wh- what's the use of the committee if you're gonna make uh decisions uh whether minor or not after uh community engagement has been already done? Or we're trying to give people uh uh their input? So can you explain to me what what's the use of the committee?
Uh Alder Miyazee, like almost everything else that you consider as a body, this item did work through at the committee level. The committee made a recommendation to the council. There is an opportunity for additional public comment tonight. And ultimately, it is the council's responsibility to a- adopt these items. It is I mean, I've only been through one other redistricting process, um but my understanding is that it's not at all unprecedented to have a robust discussion and amendments at the council level. And I think that's i- not only unpre- not unprecedented for redistricting, but it's also uh a really par for the course on just about every item that comes before you. It these items have often been discussed uh at length at committee. Committee makes a recommendation, the council further discusses and perhaps amended amends them as it pleases the council. Alright, so we're at a vote on Amendment D. Is there any objection to recording a sixteen to four vote on um in favor of Amendment D? Alder Carter?
I'll be voting no.
Alright, we'll record Alder Carter as voting no and record a fifteen to five vote in favor of Amendment D. Which brings us to Amendment E. Uh which is regarding changes towards thirty and thirty-one. Uh this one is to reconcile with the county supervisor district boundaries. President Abbas, a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment E. Are there questions? Or is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a sixteen to four vote in favor of Amendment E? Seeing no objection, we'll record a sixteen to four vote in favor of Amendment E. That takes us to Amendment F, uh which regards changes to Ward forty-three. And President Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment F. Are there questions for staff? Is there discussion on Amendment F? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a sixteen to four vote in favor of Amendment F? Alder Carter?
I'll be voting no.
Right, is there any objection to recording a fifteen to five vote in favor of Amendment F? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. Takes us to Amendment G. Amendment G uh regards changes towards forty-nine, fifty, fifty-two, and fifty-four to reconcile with proposed county supervisor district boundaries. Is there a motion? President Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment G. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a sixteen to four vote in favor of Amendment G? Alder Carter?
I'll be voting no.
Right, uh Alder Carter will be recorded as voting no, so is there any objection to recording a fifteen to five vote in favor of Amendment G? Seeing none, that amendment is adopted. Takes us to Amendment H. Which regards changes towards eighty-four and eighty-five uh to reconcile with proposed county supervisor district boundaries. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment H. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a sixteen to four vote in favor of Amendment H? Alder Carter?
I'll be voting no.
Is there objection to recording a fifteen to five vote in favor of Amendment H? Is there objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment H? Seeing none, Amendment H is adopted. Takes us to Amendment I, which regards a change to Ward 106 to reconcile with proposed county supervisor district boundaries. President Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment I. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a 16 to 4 vote in favor of Amendment I? Alder Carter will record you as voting no. Is there any objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment I? Seeing none, Amendment I is adopted. That takes us to Amendment J, which is regarding changes to Ward 109 and 110 to reconcile with proposed county supervisor district boundaries. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection? I'm gonna anticipate you, Alder Carter, to recording a 15 to 5 vote.
I move the motion to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry, President Abbas. Thank you.
I second.
Uh, thank you. I'm a little bit autopilot on these now. Properly moved and seconded, is there an objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment J? Seeing none, Amendment J is adopted. On Amendment K, which is regarding technical corrections to city islands, wards 99 and 107, and the right-of-way, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Amendment K is moved and seconded. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a 16 to 4 vote in favor? Just testing you, Alder Carter. Is there any objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment K? Seeing no objection, Amendment K will pass. And that takes us to, sorry, I have to switch documents here. Amendment L, and if you're following along, this is now in the November 2nd memo. Amendment L regards changes towards 55 and 58 to reconcile with proposed county supervisor district boundaries. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment L. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment L? Seeing none, we'll record that vote, and Amendment L is adopted. Ben?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. One of the requests by the county that are in the bullet points kind of at the front end of this memo relates to Amendment G, which the council voted on. The county was requesting that that area outlined in blue and that previous map not be shifted. I can move back to that to give the overview, but just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that, and I don't know if another vote needs to be held to amend the amendment, but wanted to make sure.
Yes, I think we'll have to come back to that, Ben, after we dispense with M.
Okay, thank you.
We'll come back to G and have you explain that. All right, so then on Amendment M, which is changes towards 67 and 70 to reconcile with supervisor district boundaries, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Amendment M. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of Amendment M? Seeing no objection, Amendment M is adopted. And now we'll need a further amendment. President Abbas, and let's turn first to staff to explain that.
So the county was requesting, after the meeting that we had with them yesterday, that this portion outlined in blue actually be maintained in Ward 52. That portion in orange would still be shifted, as was just approved for this Amendment G. Then additionally, Manona Bay is no longer needed to be moved to Ward 66. So the amendment to the amendment is to maintain Manona Bay as part of Ward 49, and to maintain that area outlined in blue as part of Ward 52.
So President Abbas, I think a motion to implement those changes?
Yep, move motion to implement as per band instructions.
Second.
All right, and so we'll call that Amendment N, which is modifications to G. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording a 15 to 5 vote in favor of those modifications? Seeing none, we'll record that vote. And then let me just check with staff, are there any other changes that we need to take up tonight?
That covers all of the amendments, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then on Items 5 and 6, as amended, are there any further questions? Or is there any discussion? Seeing none, on Items 5 and 6, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of both? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Items 5 and 6. And congratulations on your new districts and surviving the redistricting process, and deep, deep thanks to everyone who served on the redistricting committee. That was a lot of work in a very short time. Deep, deep thanks as well to our staff, who facilitated the process and coordinated with the county and wrangled the data. Again, a lot of work in a very short time. And we are very appreciative of that. All right, so we are still, surprisingly, in our public hearings, and so we will go on to the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee, Item 7, which is Legis 67529. Open a public hearing on a new license for Hook and Fade. We have no registrants on Item 7, so I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted. Takes us to Item 8, which is Legis 67530. I'll open a public hearing on a new license for Hayes Place. We have no registrants on Item 8. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file without prejudice. And that will take us to the report of the Plan Commission, and Item 9, which is Legis 67412, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at 3202 Dairy Drive. On Item 9, I will open a public hearing. We have several registrants, starting with Melanie Litfield of District 16, to be followed by Tammy Enos.
Are we allowed to speak now?
Yes, it's your turn.
My major concern on, it's not helping the homeless. I think helping the homeless is a little more than just affordable housing. But what I'm shocked at is that you built this place without zoning, without permits. Your permit is only a temporary, and it states right there on your permit form that it was only to have the cement foundation and no further work. So you don't have a plumbing permit, you don't have a building permit, electrical permit, and you continued on. You have done everything against your own rules. You have, you make us jump through all kinds of hoops. And when you decide to build on the City of Madison Fire Department property, a campground, you don't apply for the state campground license. You are required by state of Wisconsin law to adopt the campground policy in its entirety. You haven't done that. You didn't apply for any permits, you didn't have any public hearings. It's like a blatant disregard for the taxpayers of this count. And then $70,000 a month maintenance for 30 people, and you call that affordable housing? You could put these people in UW Wisconsin and get them an education and housing. Now Mr. O'Keefe said that a lot of people, we have empty beds in our homeless shelters that are existing, but a lot of people don't go to homeless shelters, Jim said, because they can't take their pets. But you're not allowing pets there. A lot of homeless shelters don't take married couples. But you're not taking married couples there. The only thing that you're doing at the Dairy Drive that they don't do at the other homeless shelters is you are not gonna police alcohol or drugs. Shame on you. You're not helping these people by finding affordable housing. To get affordable housing, you need to have work, you need to have pride. There's no provision in your $70,000 a month for continuing ed, for education, for childcare. Are you even gonna accept children at these facilities? I don't think so, with one bed. So you have done everything against the same laws that you make us abide by. And when a government thinks itself above the law of its people, that's a dictatorship. It's not a democracy. And you should be all ashamed of yourselves. I went over to that side, I live right across the street, or my business.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
I am leasing my building, my.
Thank you, that's your time. Our next registrant is Tammy Enos of District 16, to be followed by Jeff Gillis.
Hi. So I just want to let everybody know that we are completely opposed to this rezoning. We have lived on Famrite Drive for almost 30 years. We have had three different zonings when, since we've lived on this road, we have gone from commercial residential to all commercial to industrial limited. We had requested that our property be rezoned from industrial limited to residential, and was told that would never happen, as this area is slated to be industrial only. So there was gonna be no rezoning ever over here. And the other concern that we have over here is that there is absolutely no police presence whatsoever. We have had an increase in drug trafficking, and again, there's no police presence. We are worried about our safety, our property, the devaluation of our properties. So the rezoning is definitely opposing.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeff Gillis of District 16.
There's no one by that name in the list.
Right, we also have an Amy Nemeszek from District 16 registered in opposition available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of our registrants on Item 9? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, is Melanie still available?
I believe so. Go ahead, Alder.
Melanie, you ran out of time in the midst of your comments, would you please complete?
Melanie, you are unmuted on our end. Melanie, do you have a mic that's perhaps muted? Now you are muted. Now you are unmuted. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you, Melanie.
It's odd, since we just had her.
Melanie, you could try leaving and coming back in.
And Madam Mayor, she'll be recognized if she leaves and comes back into the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, give a few minutes for that, to see if we can get Melanie back. Are there any other questions for any of the other registrants? Melanie, do you wanna try now? I see that your audio reconnected.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. Did you hear the Alder's question, Melanie?
I did. I'd like to thank Alder for recognizing me, because three minutes isn't a very long time, especially when your livelihood is going to be based on your decision here tonight. I had a tenant's gonna be moving into my building, and he rescinded his offer to rent my building come January because of what's going on, not only the methadone clinic, but this homeless encampment. And I think part of the homeless encampment scare is that things don't usually go well like they are on East Washington Avenue, when we get things like that going. What I'm asking is, do not rezon this. You built an encampment without rezoning, without permits, without, you didn't abide by any of the laws that you make the taxpayers abide by. And I think it's time some of the aldermen, hopefully the majority, will stand up and say, we're wrong here. We need to go back and do things the proper way, just like all of our constituents need to do, and not in an emergency order. Nobody died of frostbite or freezing last year at Rindel Park. We have empty beds and shelters, they can go there. You need to do things properly, and you need to do things with the citizens that you're impacting. You don't believe the impact that you have on this industrial corridor where people are putting millions of dollars into buildings. Mayor Conway, are you listening to me, or are you getting your lunch?
If you'd like to finish your comments, Melanie, feel free. If you're done, we'll move on.
Well, I would like you to look at me and not be turning your back to the screen. I think that's very disrespectful. That's why we should have meetings in person. So my comment is, do not rezon this. You need to go back and do everything proper, so this isn't something that just shoved down the people's throat, that we're all in this together as a team and making a betterment for everybody, not just a group of 30 people. And I am done, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have further questions?
No, I.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for our registrants? Right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Item 9. President Abbas, a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 9. Are there questions for staff on Item 9? Seeing none, is there discussion on Item 9? Seeing none, is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Item 9? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 9. And we will go on then to our exclusion list. The first item excluded from the consent agenda is Item 34. Uh the first item excluded from the consent agenda is item thirty-four. Give me a minute. Item thirty-four is Legistar six seven seven three one. Uh declaring the City of Madison's intention to exercise its police powers establishing the Cedar Street Assessment District for twenty twenty-two in the thirteenth Aldermanic District. Um on item thirty-four, a motion please, President Abbas.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have questions for staff on this item?
Uh yes, I'd like for staff just to give us an update. Oftentimes we sail through these and we don't spend the time of letting the public know why we do such a thing. So if the um, if staff can just give us an update overview, I'd appreciate that.
I think this is for engineering, uh Mr. Phillips?
Yes, good evening. Uh before you is a, a resolution establishing an assessment district for Cedar Street. Uh I guess just a little background, establishing an assessment district is a legal requirement, uh it's required by state statutes and uh city ordinances in order to uh um establish assessments for a property. So this is a first step in a process that may ultimately establish uh special assessments against properties. It does not however establish those assessments, it's not a guarantee that the project will go forward. Preparation of concept plans and uh uh public involvement will follow, will follow later. Uh some assessment districts uh do not proceed and that's okay. This particular resolution establishes a, a district from uh South Street to Fish Hatchery Road. It helps facilitate the development of the SSM property, which is located between South Street and Fish Hatchery Road. This one's a little unusual, it's relocating an existing street uh which is Appleton, uh Appleton Avenue and it's just relocating it about sixty feet north. And that relocation uh lines up with existing Cedar Street uh to the, to the east which was just completed a bit ago. Uh did that answer your questions Alder McKinney?
Yes, it did, thank you very much for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you Alder, are there other questions Alder Cochrane?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Um so I guess my question is, is what does it mean when it says it's police powers? What does that mean?
Uh that's, that's a legal term, uh it, it doesn't have anything to do with uh the police department. It's just a legal term uh in the statutes uh referring to uh this process and, and the various ways in which assessments can be established. Nothing to do with the police department at all.
Okay, okay, so it's just saying that we're changing one street to a kind of a different district, is that kind of what I understand from your explanation?
No, 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 um so there's a process required for municipality to go through to establish special assessments uh on a project and the City of Madison uses special assessments for various things, including uh you know, the installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks and sewers in some cases and water mains and such. So in order for the city to establish those special assessments to properties that are benefited, there is a process that, that a municipality has to go to, through. The first process is the establishment of an assessment district. Okay, so you create that district, you're saying, okay, I'm going to do a project here, here are the limits of that project and here's what it's for. Okay, that'll be followed by uh a public hearing before the Board of Public, well, there'll be public input and various things, but, but the legal, that's, but the legal part of the process then is a, is eventually a public hearing before the Board of Public Works and a public hearing uh before the Common Council to establish those assessments. We typically uh approve plans and specifications uh for the project at the same time that we establish those assessments so that you wouldn't have to.
Okay Rob, thank you, I got it.
Alder Heck.
Thank you Mayor, uh Rob, just a couple of quick questions. Uh first of all, which Alder district is this project proposed for?
Uh that is in uh Alder Evers District.
Uh thank you. And, and in the course of this process, uh all people impacted by the project and potential assessments receives mailings about the public hearings and uh potential assessments, correct?
Yes, they will, but they haven't at this time.
Right.
The public involvement process will, will come, will come later and of course they will get uh uh a notice of the public hearings, but they'll also have a public informational meeting uh as well. At least one, at least one.
Great, and, and, and you and engineering staff are available to answer questions uh prior to council meetings about all these public works types projects and questions about the process, correct?
Well absolutely, and, and you get, you don't get typically a lot of residents coming to the Common Council and one of the reasons is because there is opportunities for them to engage in the process earlier.
And you're available, you're also uh available to answer questions uh by Alders uh before the council meeting too, correct?
Oh absolutely, of course.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Alder Heck, Alder Evers?
Yes Mayor, real quick, um Rob, uh regarding the assessments on this particular portion of new Cedar, I, it's true that SSM is going to be picking up the, all of the, the majority of, not all of the bill, correct? The assessments are not going to private residents because they are not along this section of the road.
That's correct, the assessments would not be going to any others.
And uh just to reiterate this and I want you to say it again so everybody can hear, you are prepared and so is staff, every single mem- member of city staff to answer questions like this so that we do not have to take time and take something off the consent agenda. And I want to compliment one of my fellow Alders who took the time at a hurry to send an email to you about this very specific item so that she did not have to take it off the consent agenda. So that is true that you are able to answer questions on a Monday on any item that comes up on our Tuesday agenda, correct?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Alder, Alder Harrington McKinney, another question?
Um a question and also a comment. Um Rob, thank you very much for um sharing that information. And so what I hear, it's not uh for um us as Alders to be well informed, but it is for the public to get good information. And so um just as with the other amendment when it said uh policing power, it, it, we do, uh what I'm learning is, is that we put a lot of things on the consent agenda for the efficiency of uh our, our processes. Uh but oftentimes uh we leave the public input and information and education uh aside. So uh I absolutely uh am, have no regrets of pulling this off the consent agenda so that Rob, you could do exactly what you did to share so that individuals, people who had questions, who may not get to the public meetings or for whatever information, get a clear understanding. And that came from Alder Heck and thank you very much. And it also came from the Alder who was in this district. Uh but it is information and education and we don't do enough of it. And so we have very intelligent people who vote, who pay taxes and they have a right to know and get information and it's our job to provide that information, thank you.
Thank you Alder Harrington McKinney. Is there any further questions? Is there any further discussion? Seeing neither, item thirty-four has been moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item thirty-four. And we will go on to item thirty-eight, which is Legistar six seven seven eight zero, declaring the city's intention to exercise its police powers to establish the Old Milton Road and Craig Avenue Resurfacing Assessment District of twenty twenty-one in the eleventh and nineteenth Aldermanic Districts. On item thirty-eight, we have one registrant, Alexander Wilburn of District two.
Yeah, they are not in the list.
Right, uh then President Abbas, a motion on item thirty-eight please?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item thirty-eight. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item thirty-eight? Seeing none, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item thirty-eight. That takes us to item forty and forty-one. Is there any objection to taking these two items, which are both related to the use of the Safe Routes grants up together? Seeing no objection, then we'll take up item forty, which is Legistar, Legistar six seven seven nine nine, approving a Safe Routes grant to fund the installation of a new sidewalk at Dean Avenue, Alice Avenue, Seth Circle and Tyler Circle in that assessment district. And item forty-one, which is Legistar six seven eight two four, using the same grant to fund the installation of new sidewalk on the, in the Hooker Ave, Sheridan Drive, Steensland Drive Resurfacing Assessment District. On both items, uh can we have a motion first, President Abbas?
Motion to adopt both agenda items.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt items forty and forty-one. Are there questions for staff? Alder Carter.
Thank you. Back to you again Rob. I, I just have a quick question because I know with new sidewalks, et cetera, there is an assessment and was the residents on um either forty or forty-one given the option of a fifteen year?
Uh I, I don't know, I'd have to pull up those resolutions to uh, to check that, uh I'm not sure. I can do that if, if you'd like.
That, that's fine, if you want to. Uh my second question is, did um when was the community engagement on these two?
That was uh, that was in the spring, uh winter and spring of this, of this year.
Mm-hmm.
I can explain how the Safe Routes grants uh work if you'd like.
Sure, why not? And then um I'm sure who is this Alder Foster and Alder Abbas probably was uh proactive in trying to get the repayment done at the longest period of time. So if you can go, if you can talk about the Safe Routes grants?
So a few years ago, Alders and staff were interested in reducing the cost of special assessments for new sidewalks. And what we came up with was a, was a grant program. Uh the grant program pays fifty percent of the cost of assessable sidewalk projects in certain eligible areas. Um to be eligible, the, the uh properties, uh the right of way had to be dedicated prior to nineteen eighty-one and seventy percent of the properties had to be uh single or, or two family dwellings. So um, so this, this uh uh these projects were approved uh in the uh spring uh for construction this year and this uh uh applies the grant uh to those assessments. So essentially if you have, uh let's see, for um, for Dean, uh for the Dean, Alice and Seth Court project, the cost per Lino foot for sidewalk was thirty-five dollars a foot. If you had a sixty-foot frontage, uh you'd pay two thousand one hundred dollars and the grant would uh, would cover half of that, so one thousand fifty dollars. Uh so it would reduce uh your, your cost for that sidewalk by one thousand fifty dollars, fifty percent of the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you Alder Carter, are there any further questions on items forty and forty-one? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of items forty and forty-one? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote on those two items. And that takes us to item forty-seven, which is Legistar six seven three seven three, repealing sections of the Madison General Ordinances to eliminate the Digital Technology Committee. On item forty-seven, uh we have no registrants. So President Abbas, a motion please?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item forty-seven, are there questions for staff? Alder Wihilehi.
Thank you Madam Mayor, uh for this item, uh it came to the CCSC to um uh repeal the uh Digital Technology Committee. And I, I would like for the record to know how many members were in there in that committee and what was the process? If uh to repeal the uh committee, uh lack of attendance, lack of uh participation or engagement, so I'd like to hear from the staff as why there's less engagement and participation from the uh committee? And how many committee members were there?
Uh alright, Alder. Um I'm not sure if we have IT staff present in the meeting to speak about this committee, does not look like it. Um but perhaps members of the committee can speak to it? Uh Alder Furman?
Um thank you Mayor, I can try, as the, as the sponsor of this, I can try my best to answer some of those questions. And we did also discuss this at, at the last CCEC meeting. Um there um uh were, um I believe it's uh, it's actually in the ordinance, I believe there are nine members of the committee. Um currently there are only two members of the committee. Um uh there are members that have resigned, um there are members that, that have their positions renewed um uh because they didn't apply again. Um and then there are, and, and only one Alder was appointed. Um essentially the, the definition of this committee um made it incredibly difficult for this committee um to find work to do. Um a lot of meetings um struggled to have agenda items, a lot of meetings struggled to have um quorum, people not showing up. And um just the definition of the committee really gave the committee very little to work on. Um and it just seemed like it was best um based on the fact that there are only two, two members uh left and, and that the committee has struggled to have items that it made sense to um dissolve it.
Thank you Alder Furman. Uh I, I will just note also, I've looked up the record from the CCEC meeting. Um the motion was made by Vice President Martin and seconded by yourself Alder Wihilehi um to adopt. I don't have a record uh easily at hand of which members of CCEC were there, but it, uh the motion passed on a voice vote.
Yes, I, I, for the record, you know, sometimes when we have uh things happen too fast and I think for the record, you know, sometimes when we uh dissolve a committee, uh we would like to know as a community, uh this uh common council meeting is not only for us, but it's also community members are watching so that they know if uh a committee is dissolved, there's a reason. Uh perhaps, you know, lack of engagement or lack of uh uh involvement with the committee. But also for the record, I would like to know like how, what's the process in dissolving uh a, a committee? And perhaps Attorney Haas, if he's here, he can, he can uh talk to that. Uh instead of just one person saying that we need to uh dissolve this committee and let's move on. Uh I, you know, I, I, I just would like to see the, the clear process if possible.
I believe Attorney Haas is still with us. I believe Attorney Haas is still with us.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, the process for dissolving a committee is the same as the process for creating a committee. There's an ordinance to introduce, it goes through the committee process, and it comes back to the council for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas, questions?
No, I have a motion.
Uh, let's see, Aldo Harrington McKinney, do you have questions for staff?
And I don't think there's any representative from the IT staff, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so my question would have been to the IT staff in terms of the, the, two things. One, I would have, uh, asked the IT staff, uh, to give input. And secondly, um, for the, the TFOG, um, committee, the boards, committees, and commissions, you know, to look at our structure as a whole, and rather than piecemeat, you know, oh, piecemealing, you know, those, um, um, those decisions, I would have liked to have had the opportunity to really look at all the boards, committees, and commissions so that we could, we could support as a whole, uh, as a body as a whole, rather than one Alder making a decision of what, uh, should be dissolved and what should not be. It's a committee, and it's a committee process. And so we use processes a lot, but sometimes we don't. Thank you.
You, Aldo Harrington McKinney, I'm not sure if there's any other staff here that can speak to the Digital Technology Committee. Attorney Haas?
I realize it wasn't questioned directly on me, but I will just say that I did speak with Sarah Edgerton, the IT Director, about this ordinance, and she said that she supported the ordinance.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Those good information.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Aldo Wihileh, is your hand still up from previously? Right, thank you. Uh, all right. We've got, uh, several folks in queue. Aldo Figaro Cole, is it questions?
A question for, for the Chair.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, thank you. So just, um, again, um, when it comes to processes, I, we as Alders, we get the, um, option to put resolution, resolutions forward on our own, um, at any given time, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, um, as a member of the TFOG's committee, which I'm, at the Health Committee, which I am, and does that, does that takes that right away from me in any way, shape, or form?
No.
Okay, so I mean, I, this, this keeps on coming up, and I really don't understand the argument. We are serving different committees? That doesn't mean that if we see some, you know, especially the TFOG's committee that has a specific, um, pre, pre, pre-rules or pre-processes that we need to be, uh, looking into. I just don't understand what does that have to do with anything? I, I, it doesn't take away from me to be able to look at something, want to make it better, do my research, and put an amendment forward, and at the end of the day, TFOG's committee is not the one making the decision, nor am I. At the end of the day, I'm presenting that to the council, and the twenty of us can make the decision collectively. So I just wanted to point that out because it keeps on popping up, and, and it's, um, I was starting to question in my, my authority when it came to serving the community, the committee versus when can I put resolutions forward?
Thank you, Aldo Figaro Cole. Uh, Aldo Conklin, is it a question?
Um, I would say more so of a statement, if that's okay.
Not yet, Alder.
Okay.
Uh, Aldo Wihileh, is it a question? No. Uh, all right, so having dispensed with questions, then we're on to discussion. Uh, and President Abbas is first in the queue.
Yeah, I want to move a motion to refer this to next common council meeting, and if I have a second, I will speak to that.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to the next council meeting, President Abbas?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, for the opportunity. Uh, at CCEC, uh, Aldo, uh, Furman, he explained, uh, the history of the committee, and I appreciate that. Uh, there was no IT staff there to answer any questions. Again, at common council meeting, there's no IT staff here as well. I think so it's important for the Alders, if they have a questions, they could have an opportunity directly addressing to the IT. Perhaps I also have some questions, too. And I, I feel more comfortable with, uh, having those discussions with the IT staff. So just referring you to the next meeting makes sense. So we can have a question-answer clarity about what would be the next step once it gets resolved. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. So we're now on the motion to refer this item, uh, on discussion. Aldo Wihileh? No. Uh, Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not going to support this referral. I just want to point out some pretty, pretty important things about where, where we are with this particular resolution. This was introduced at a council meeting on September twenty-first. Um, so it was on our agenda on September twenty-first as an introduction. It was referred to CCEC. At the CCEC meeting on October fifth, um, the CCEC decided to refer to a follow-up meeting on October nineteenth because they, they didn't, uh, they had other things on their agenda, they couldn't get it done. October nineteenth, CCEC had a discussion about this, um, decided to recommend adoption. Um, and now it is November second. Um, there is plenty of time for individuals to reach out to the IT Department and ask them to either be here or ask questions. Because this was introduced such a long time ago, and was at CCEC, um, I just, I think we're wasting time, um, uh, the, the public's time and, and the, the time of this body by referring it. Um, so I, I won't be supporting that, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting this referral for the reasons that Aldo Furman indicated. And also, I, I just want to remind my colleagues, we have way too many committees. We have, what, over a hundred committees?
Thank you.
And there's, and when an Alder comes to us and says, hey, this committee is dysfunctional, not meeting, uh, it doesn't make quorum, it's not getting anything done, I think we should welcome that as an opportunity to, to do away with that committee. We need to respond to the spirit and to the letter, in fact, of the TFOG's recommendations. And let's not dilly-dally, let's not kick the can down the road. We already know that this makes sense. CCEC suggested that this be approved. I, I won't support this referral. Let's be more efficient, colleagues. Let's be more efficient, let's get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Wihileh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one thing I want to say is, this was not, it didn't come from the TFOG. Aldo Furman is part of that committee, it's not from TFOG. We are in the process of streamlining BCC. And I'm just, you know, for equity and inclusion and for, uh, transparency, we don't want to have one man show here. I feel because of, uh, the presence of, uh, power and privilege, that we can do whatever we want to do. I don't agree with that. There's a process. We want to, the, it, you know, we have BCC committee that we are trying to streamline, both from the TFOG as well as the President Work Group of, uh, Social Justice, Equity, and Anti-Racism. We are in the process of streamlining the BCC. I understand if the committee is not meeting their guidelines or meeting, I want to hear from the committee. What if the committee did not colla-, you know, did not, uh, they feel they're not being heard, or they're being not, uh, respected at that committee? People from communities are coming to this BCC, and if their voices are not heard, or not respected, then they leave. And I'm just curious to know what's the reason why some of those committee members are not either engaging in the committee, or they are not renewing their, uh, uh, participation in the committee? It's just a matter of transparency, process, and knowing the, 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 the fact. And as far as, you know, uh, Aldo, uh, Figaro Cole, I don't appreciate every time I speak, you come and counter what I say.
Aldo, you need to address the Chair, not your colleagues.
Thank you, Madam, but I want to be very specific. This is not personal. We have, we are smart people, we know what we're doing, we're doing our homework, we're, we know what's going on. All we need is transparency, we need a process. And if we question that, it becomes personal. We were not elected to, to create a hostile environment for each other. We are here to respect each other and to do the city work. And I'm here to acknowledge that there has to be more than one person just dissolving, uh, a committee. And I would like to hear from the IT, and perhaps I want to hear from other committee members who have been there. They can just write to the council, allalders@cityofmadison.com. If you are in that committee, please write why you're not engaging in this committee, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Carter?
I was just going to say, I think it's interesting that the members of TFOG thought this came from TFOG when it didn't. That's interesting. Um, but more specifically, I think that when we dissolve a committee and every committee is associated with the department or division or an office, that we should have that department present to talk, to not only talk about why it should be dissolved, but also collaborate with the Alder that is on that committee on why it should be dissolved. I don't think that is too much to ask. We just had a, a member of the public say that we, uh, decided to build, um, shelters before we changed the zoning. So we know what happens when we move fast as a government agency. We know what happens when we move fast. Some of us are in the slice-and-dice mode, and slice-and-dice is going to come back and bite you. And I'm shocked that those colleagues that have been here for some time has joined in on that theory. I think it's absolutely fine that this gets referred when Sarah or her designee can come in and, and talk about this committee and why it needs to be resolved. But I will say this in closing. As we resolve, dissolve, I'm sorry, dissolve these committees, we can't keep coming back saying we have a hundred committees. At some time, we have to use subtraction. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo. Aldo Conklin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will not be supporting this referral. Um, again, I think we are all aware of how many committees there are, whether there's one hundred or eighty or seventy-five. There's too many committees. And on top of that, there is nobody from the committee to come talk to us because there's only two people left. Everyone is gone, nobody has been in this committee, it's not being active, it's not involved. So it's really not hurting anybody. I don't think not just one person brought this to the table, even though one person's name on it, many people have brought the fact that there are too many committees, and we keep referring that and, and changing it to another time, another time. It's not doing us any good, they're not active, they're not doing anything, so why keep them around? Nobody's a part of this committee, it's not doing anything, and I think it's time for us to move forward. And this is a great beginning to, to, to let this, annex this from the boards, commissions, and committees to show that we can really do this, and let's move forward to keep making that number go down. So we have a, 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 a good number that everybody can work with and be involved with, and those committees can be enriched with people's commitment and activeness. So that's all I want to say. I hope my other colleagues will support this and not go along with referring this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Harrington McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, let me be very clear. With over, uh, with over a hundred boards, committees, and commissions, there are absolutely too many of them. But doing it one by one, I mean, does, I mean, my challenge is, is that we take the boards, committees, and commissions and look at those that can be combined, those that can be resolved or dissolved, so that we can make a significant impact. We have still, we're still talking about there are too many boards, committees, and commissions. We've been talking about it, and quite frankly, I'm sick of talking about it or hearing about it when we're not actively taking those and making it a priority and doing exactly what I hear tonight, is, is that let's sit, let's, um, uh, let's put our mind to reducing and evaluating and bringing together and reducing the number of boards, committees, and commissions that we have. It's not a one-by-one thing, it's that we really do need to take this on and take this on seriously so that we can come back to, to the full council and say that of the one hundred boards, committees, and, and commissions, we have to cut, I heard someone say, cut it in half. We've combined these, and this is not effective. But we're not doing that. We're nitpicking, and it's going to take us forever to do what everyone has said. We have too many boards, committees, and commissions. And what happens is, is that there are twenty Alders, and some twenty Alders are serving on multiple boards, committees, and commissions, and that's too much. And we can reduce that if we make it a priority. But ma- making it a priority is not doing it one at a time. And so I am supporting us really looking at that, um, that IT department. Um, does it need to stand by itself, does it need to be rolled into something else? And so we are, um, um, we are prolonging something that we really do need to be addressing one hundred percent right now so that we can do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Harrington McKinney. I have a number of Alders in the queue still. I'd like to remind you that the question before us is referral. We're not discussing the merits, uh, of the main motion at this point, or, or of the TFOG's process, or of how many committees we have. Uh, the motion before us is referral to the eleven-sixteen Common Council Meeting. Aldo Bennett?
Thank you for that reminder, and, um, actually, at this moment in time, I'll just, my comments towards, um, the referral, and then, uh, should the motion fail, um, speak towards the merit of the proposal. Um, but I really don't understand why it is a convention for every time someone has disparaging views towards a certain, um, proposal or, um, issues with it, the, the, the immediate move is to refer, 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 refer. I feel like that's, most of what we do on this council is refer this, kick the bucket down to a different day, where two weeks later, we'll have to deal with it again. We heard this issue at CCEC, I believe, last week. So there was a whole week between now and then to just, to further understand why this proposal is being put forward. It was on the council agenda, so there was time between then and now to ask questions about why this is being, um, put forward to us today. So I, I don't understand why we can't, um, move with, why can't, why we can't, um, be efficient with our actions. And I hear on one side, uh, on one side, there's this view that we're moving too fast, and we need more time with this proposal. And on the other side, it's going to take, it's taking too long to go one by one with, um, taking away committees. So like, which is it? Are we taking too long, or are we going too fast? And I don't know, as Aldo Furman is the only committee member out of the two committee members here, I welcome him to corroborate, um, why folks are leaving this committee, why it is ineffective. Um, and I'll speak more to like, an issue of equity when we discuss the merits, but I think uh, how is it equitable to us or the public's time for us to be like, always referring things? When we should be discussing issues that, of, of matter? Um, so, no, I, I don't, like, I don't support this referral. Um, we need to be efficient with our time, um, and efficient with our committees.
Thank you, Alder Lemmer, on the question of referral.
Yes, I will be super quick. I don't support referral. I don't understand what questions could like not be addressed. I got my questions addressed in advance. That doesn't sound like an argument to me that makes any sense. This has had ample public review with it being introduced two months ago. And if we can't do this, reducing BCCs was one of the primary TFOG's recommendations. There is not a lower hanging fruit than this committee. And if we can't do this, we won't be able to accomplish any of the much bigger changes ahead of us. So I do not support referral. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas on referral?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think so the discussion totally went in a different way. My intention was not to save this committee or dismantle this committee or remove it. I think so the discussion, the way I noticed it, the way I judge or I will say noticed is Alder think this referral mean we want to keep this committee there. I think so there was a simple request. Some orders did not have enough opportunity to really get their question heard, especially in a public domain, not 101. Of course, there's an opportunity. Everybody can reach out to staff. But as this is a public meeting and things, question if asked to the staff should be asked in a public domain, why, what happened and how it happened. And that's why we are here in a council, right? So, I mean, it's the whole, this was only discussion about referral. And the reason I think this referral is should be, we should give that courtesy to our alder. If alder failed, she want to ask those question in a public domain. If this committee is not working and if it's not working, these things could be discussed in a public domain. I don't see as any harm. It's not anything we want this committee to be there or, you know, we, I agree with a lot of my colleagues about there's a far too many committees. There was a TFOG's recommendation. Again, I'm talking about TFOG's, not a referral. So I will correct myself. I will say this is only about, only courtesy request by alder. And I think so we should accommodate that. And regarding effectiveness and efficiency, I would say that I'm very thoughtful about it personally as a council president, setting agenda. There are many things we took it on CCC floor. And there are many things I personally delayed and moved around to make sure we as a council here get it done. I personally feel when I heard from alder, she had a question and want to know in a public domain. I think so that's a courtesy we should provide to alder. And it's not about we want that committee to operate or we have too many or too less. It's just a courtesy to really have the discussion happen in a public domain with the staff not asking the chair of the committee or alder. It's also not fair to that alder if we start asking them question. It should be asked to the staff and staff is not here. That's only the reason. The staff was not at CCEC. Staff was not here at the today meeting. So having staff member from IT would be beneficial. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. Vice President Martin on the question of referral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say with all due respect to my colleagues here and generally not directly at them as I'm directing my comments to the mayor. There comes a point where we have to accept responsibility for how we as alders handle business like this. This came to the CCEC on October 19th. And we were, we discussed it and these questions weren't brought up. We recommended to council to adopt. You know, if these questions came up before tonight, that is an opportunity for all of us to, you know, reach out with our questions beforehand and do our homework. Sometimes, I mean, I say this fully while understanding that, you know, we all have, you know, full-time jobs, families, other lives. And sometimes that preparation isn't, you know, we aren't able to prepare ourselves as much as we can. And so I fully realize that. But we did have more than a week to think about this. We've had the same presentation and as far as, and we could, even if we don't ask it in a public forum, we still have our ways of communicating that we can communicate to our public and, you know, blogs, emails, et cetera. And I also think that the question that is being asked was answered by staff. The question was asked about what the IT department thinks about it. The IT department, the IT department isn't here tonight. The IT presence, the IT department's presence was not requested, I presume. And if somebody can correct me on that, I will absolutely take that back. Because I'm sure that had that happened, somebody would be here. We've had our city attorney tell us that the IT department has this or has no use for this and yes, please dissolve it. So I don't know what any kind of different answers that we're going to be able to get that we wouldn't be able to communicate in other public forums. And so I encourage us to vote no on referral and take this up now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Alder Carter on the question of referral?
I call the question.
Alder, since you're the last alder in the queue, we are moving in that direction anyway. So on the question of referral of this item to the 1116 Common Council Meeting, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
No.
Alder Foster? I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
No, an oh.
Thank you. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Halverson?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Lemmer?
No.
Vice President Martin?
No.
Alder Miyazi?
Aye.
Alder Viver?
Aye.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me? It cut out.
Aye.
Aye, Alder Viver, aye. Alder Viver?
No.
Alder Wihelye?
Aye.
Thank you. President Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Alboras?
Yes.
Thank you. Alder Benford?
Aye.
Alder Bennett?
Yep.
I'm sorry, yes, okay, thank you. Alder Carter?
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, shit. No. No.
On the item of referral, Alder Bennett votes no. Okay, thank you. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine ayes, 11 noes.
It's nine ayes and 11 noes. The motion to refer fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt. Item 47, is there further discussion on the question of adoption? Alder Foster?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you, Alder Furman, for introducing this. I do support it. I appreciate all the around the need to make these reductions and the work at the head of the TFOG's Implementation Workgroup. I would also just encourage all my colleagues, if you're on a committee that you think maybe shouldn't exist, you also don't have to wait for us. I personally took it on myself three years ago to move elimination of two different committees that the Common Council supported. And had we waited on doing that until we did the master overhaul of the committee structure, we'd still be waiting. And those two committees would have been plugging along, you know, half dead as well. So I very much support this. And again, if anybody's on a committee right now that you think really needs to be evaluated before TFOG gets to it, I would encourage you to bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just kind of reiterate what Alder Foster has said and, you know, what Alder Foster did with the Committee on the Environment and the Solid Waste Committee and consolidating that with the Sustainable Madison Committee made a whole lot of sense. And these types of actions are something that any of us can do as colleagues. We do not need TFOG's to decide which committees are TFOG. Let's face it, it's much easier to start a committee than to end it. And the ending a committee takes, you know, a fair amount of tenacity apparently. Otherwise, we wouldn't have so many committees today. So let's be about the business of moving our city forward in an efficient manner and operating as efficiently and effectively as possible. And a certain way to do that is to relieve ourselves and staff of the unnecessary burden of holding on to a committee that doesn't belong in BCCs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. On the question of adoption, Vice President Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I kind of, I want to kind of echo and extrapolate a bit on the comments of my previous two colleagues who spoke. And that, you know, acknowledging the fact that we do all have the same ability to dissolve a committee that doesn't have anything to do, doesn't and cannot recruit new members. I think the one thing that I really want to add is that a committee ceasing to exist does not imply that that committee is not worthwhile. It just means that, and it sounds like in this case, that the work that has previously fallen and the review of that committee has been completed. The committee has completed its charge and it's okay if it closes or, you know, is dissolved. We don't need to keep committees, boards, commissions in perpetuity and they should be able to evolve as needed and not necessarily have to wait for a huge sweeping recommendation from another committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wihelye?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to reiterate what I have said, I'm not against closing or dissolving this committee. But there has to be a process. There are people who are involved. These are our community members. We don't know the whole story. And without knowing the whole story, why they are not part of the committee as equity. And for that reason, without knowing the reason why we want to dissolve and without hearing from the IT department in a public domain, I'll be voting no for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yes, so I will say something that really stuck with me from the CCEC meeting is when Alder Furman, the only other committee member present during this meeting and I believe during CCEC as well, that either we go ahead and dissolve this committee or we don't dissolve it and it's not going to function anyways because it doesn't have quorum and it's against the laws anyways. So either way, this committee is not going to be functioning. So again, in terms of like equity, why is it equitable to have an alder, another committee member, spend their time, energy, and effort on a committee that doesn't exist anyways? We've dissolved committees before. I recall when we first entered office, we dissolved the City County Liaison Committee for similar reasons of not meeting quorum. Why should this be different? And also, Mayor Satya, I will say that courtesy is a very tricky word. I think that I strongly believe, and it's not just I believe, it's just should be a norm, a convention at this point, that courtesies should be extended to all council members. I certainly have questions that I'd love to ask in a public format. But for the efficiency of council, I don't. I ask it in one-on-one conversations. And if I want to disperse that information, I do so through my blog so that the public can receive the information that we discussed in a one-on-one meeting instead of during a public meeting that is already time constrained anyways. So if we're going to extend those courtesies, let's extend it to all council members. Let's all just pull things off of the agenda that we want to talk about, that we'd like to discuss in a public domain, and let's do that. Otherwise, let's leave courtesy out of this conversation.
Thank you, Alder. On the question of adoption, Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to point out something that somebody had said earlier that I think is just an important reminder. It's really easy to create committees if we want to recreate this committee in the future because there's a need for it. We can do that incredibly easy. So when we choose to dissolve this, just remember if there is a need for this in the future, very easy to recreate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue on the question of adoption. So is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item 47? Alder Carter? You're muted, Alder.
That's me as abstaining. Thank you.
Alder Carter will be noted as abstaining. Alder Wihelye?
No for me. Thank you.
Alder Wihelye will be voted as noted as voting no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No. Please call me as a voting no.
Alder Harrington McKinney will be listed as voting no. With those notes, is there any objection to recording a 17 to 1 vote in favor of item 47? Seeing no further objection, we'll record that vote and item 47 is adopted. That takes us to item 53. Item 53 is Legisstar 67813 approving the 2022 Operating Plan for the Central Bid. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item 53?
Do we have a registrant?
Oh, we have Tiffany Kenny registered in support from District 4 representing the bid available to answer questions. Are there questions for the registrant?
Tiffany.
Alder Harrington McKinney, would you like to ask a question of the registrant?
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'm saying yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Good evening, Alder.
Good evening, good evening. The reason that I pulled this off is again to allow you to just give us just a snapshot of the 2022 Operating Plan for the MCB, please.
Sure. Thank you for having me this evening. So yes, before you, you have the 2022 Business Improvement District Operating Plan. We, most of the adjustments that you'll see in the 2022 plan take us back to a more in-person situation for downtown. So last year, when you reviewed our operating plan, it had a lot of either hybrid or virtual events. So you'll see that we are going to be building off the success of things we've done this year, like the Madison Night Market, like the collaboration on the pop-up shop, a new e-gift card program and several things like that that move us into much more of an in-person environment. And in the operating plan itself, there are two items I would point out for you. The first is that the budget item is still in yellow and that is dependent on your budget as a city. So that gets changed and finally approved when your budget is approved. And then you'll see that there is no adjustment to the boundaries or to the parcels added to the district. It stays the same size and shape. And then just to again highlight that work to get more per- And then just to again highlight that work to get more in-person events and to continue the great work that we've done this last year in partnership with the city and other folks to continue to grow and shape downtown into the place that is more equitable and more inclusive.
One last question. When you say more equitable and more inclusive, would you give us a highlight of what that looked like?
Sure. I'd love for you to look specifically on page five is where we add that bullet point under, it's like the second bullet point. But then to reference the projects we worked on this year, you know, we are proud supporters of Madlit. I heard you speak about that earlier tonight. We are thrilled at the success we've had with the pop-up partnership with the Office of Business Resources. And we continue to draw a diverse, dynamic and eclectic group of people to the Madison Night Market. We see about 7,000 people attending that project in downtown Madison and we're proud of all three of those and hope to continue to build on those.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Are there any other questions for our registrant?
I am complete, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, then President Abbas, a motion on item 53? I'm sorry, we have a motion already. This is why I take notes. Is there any discussion then? Are there questions for staff on item 53? Or is there discussion? Seeing neither, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 53? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 53. And that will take us to item 63, which is Legis star 67912, substitute.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Carter?
Can I move for a five-minute break?
Is there a second for a five-minute break? Other number will second. So it's moved and seconded to take a five-minute break. Is there any objection to taking a five-minute break? Seeing no objection, it's now 9:20. We'll be back at 9:25. And I will see you in five minutes. 9:25 having arrived, I will ask Alders to come back and to turn their cameras back on. And I will ask the clerk to slowly call the roll. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Evers? I will come back to Alder Evers. Alder Figueroa Cole? Oh, Alder Evers is here. Okay, I heard him. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Foster?
Present.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Lemmer?
Here.
Vice President Martin?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Meadsie?
Present.
Thank you. Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Vitterver?
Here.
Alder Wihelye?
Here.
President Abbas?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Alboras?
I will slowly respond. Here.
Thank you. Alder Benford?
Here.
Thanks. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Carter?
Present.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. All right. So now we are on item 63, which again is Legis star 67912, a substitute authorizing the use of ARPA funds in public health regarding violence prevention and emerging needs as described in Legis star file 65935. On item 63, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 63. On item 63, are there questions for staff? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a specific question and it says that the city received $47.2 million in ARPA funds and specifically I'm calling attention to the violence prevention and emerging needs. Could, and I would like staff to really speak to the violence prevention and emerging needs and what that looks like. If you could give me some, and I'm saying giving me is to give some kind of summary in terms of what's the depth of what that looks like, what does that look like? Or will that look like?
Thank you, Alder. We have with us tonight Ariel Smith from Public Health, Madison-Dane County, who I think can speak to the plans for these funds.
Absolutely. Ariel is the one that I would have called upon. Thank you.
Ariel?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. To answer your question, the funds for, the funds that come from ARPA that are allocated to the violence prevention work are broken up into a few categories. Some of this is going to support evaluation work around the CARES program. Some of it is going to support the purchasing and expansion of our electronic health record system so that we can better keep data on clients we are serving around violence prevention. And a significant chunk, and if my estimates are correct, around $800,000, if not a little bit more, will be going out in RFP to community based on priorities that the Madison and Dane County Violence Prevention Coalition have selected in the domains of our five goal areas of the Madison and Dane County Violence Prevention Roadmap. So that's where the funding is currently allocated in the broad buckets to be directed towards.
And a follow-up question. You said that the $800,000 will be going out to, through RFPs. Will that be, will those RFPs have a time cycle to allow community organizations to apply for that or what is the timeframe or is that too early to determine? And my follow-up question is that one of the programs that we've been looking at is the gun violence reduction. Is that included in that $800,000? Or will that be included in the $800,000?
Good question. So it is a little early for us to determine an official timeline for the RFPs to be released. The Coalition right now is scheduled to really start the concrete work on this in January of 2022 with the intent that we will be able to release an RFP at some point in 2022. We're really hoping for first quarter, but I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves with the intent to fund community-based organizations for a year, anywhere from a year to a year and a half. We're still waiting on our guidance from finance just to make sure we're not going to impede on their efforts of bookkeeping too much with our timeline. And so as soon as we have that, we'll be ready to go. And the answer to your follow-up question around GPRS, no, that is not currently included in our plans for ARPA spending this time.
Let me just go back to make sure I'm hearing you. So that $800,000 does not include the gun violence reduction strategy or programming?
No, and I can give a little more context to that. So the funding is going to support public health modeling of what we are doing in the gun prevention, I'm sorry, the violence prevention, violence reduction realm. And so our program model and what we're moving towards is similar to some of the things that are being set around GPRS and follows a similar formula in predictive modeling as most, if not all, violence prevention and intervention programming does. But it is not the specific, what I know as being a program in a box as GPRS. So at this time, there's funding that supports the way public health is looking to move forward in this arena, but nothing that directly supports the GPRS modeling.
Okay. Can I ask you one additional question? And you said program in a box. Is there going to be any conflict with the modeling, the public health model to violence reduction and the program in a box that you referred to? Is that a conflict or are they going to be running parallel? Not running parallel, maybe that's not the great, maybe that's not the correct answer, but will they be moving in the direction of making overhaul healthy, public, now you wanna, I'm almost afraid to say public safety health, but moving as a public health deterrent?
I believe if I understand your question correctly, essentially it would be duplicative. Public health is moving forward with a prevention and intervention modeling that really supports overall violence prevention and reduction as our goal that we are trying to achieve. GPRS and what public health has laid out in its current strategy to fund them both would be duplicative work. My opinion is it wouldn't be in our best interest to fund both, but to pick an avenue.
Thank you for that clarity. And I promised this one question. So that program in the box, is that being moved, a consideration of being moved into the public health model that you referred to?
I want to ask a clarifying question. Is the question, is GPRS being considered to be moved into public health or is the question? Could you repeat the question one more time? I apologize.
No, you're on the right track. I just answered the way you would answer it. That's what, I'm not telling you how to answer it. I'm just trying to get some kind of clarity in which each thing sits because I'm very clear, I'm looking at this as a public health model. I'm very clear on that. I just need some clarity on whether those two things will be working in concert or will they be different?
Alder Harrington McKinney, can I try and then you certainly can go back to Ariel for more answers if you're not satisfied. But I think what Ariel is trying to say is two things. First, that public health has a gun violence reduction strategy as part of the larger violence prevention and reduction plan that is similar to the GPRS strategy that has been adopted in other cities, but not exactly the same. And so that would be thing one. And then thing two would be that the ARPA funding, which is before us tonight, will be primarily dedicated to the RFP that we've discussed, which would support this, the broader violence prevention and reduction strategy. And I just remind you that in addition to this funding, the 2022 budget currently has, correct me if I get the number wrong, Ariel, 415,000 and change in funding specifically for gun violence reduction efforts. And that would be in addition to the funding that's before us tonight, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for clarifying. And of that 415,000, that will be earmarked to gun violence prevention?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And will that be issued through an RFP process?
No, Alder, that will be for public health to do the work in-house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. So Ariel, the money that you're getting, the ARPA money, the $1,450,000, that is for not a continuous program, is for a one-time program, correct? So the one-time program would be the software that you are seeking? You said something about 850,000 for computer, software upgrade system. Am I right on that?
So some of the funding from the ARPA allocation from the city is going to what we deemed infrastructure cost. And some of that infrastructure is to support software in terms of data collection, software, our electronic health record system that public health has in addition to some evaluation services. public health has, in addition to some evaluation services. So that's more in our infrastructure bucket. And then our other large bucket where the ARPA funding is being allocated to, um, is community-based RFPs that support projects, initiatives, programming, and/or services that, uh, support any of the goals, uh, strategies or objectives that are laid out in the Madison and Dane County Violence Prevention Roadmap.
And so what, can you just expound on the RF, RFP, and what community organizations would be, what you're looking for community organizations to do?
It could.
In general?
Yeah, I could, but it'll be very preliminary at this point, um, as the Madison and Dane County Violence Prevention Coalition will be establishing kind of the broader buckets of work in which we will, are, um, offer the RFPs in. But for right now, we are mainly looking to support programming and initiatives that are focused on some of our biggest drivers, um, and root causes of violence that we know to be true today. So, um, it's most likely, although I can't confirm at this point, that funding will be steered towards, um, positive youth development activities, um, crisis intervention type services, as well as supporting some of our mental health, behavioral health services for following up with victims and perpetrators of violence. And those are just a few of the things I know that have been discussed amongst the coalition so far.
And a lot of times we use youth as the catch-all, but when you, um, when we get the reports and someone is twenty-three or twenty-five, are, are they still under that umbrella? Or can you be thirty-five and still be a youth?
Yep, good question. Um, the way that we've talked about it so far in the coalition and, and within our violence prevention team in terms of planning, um, will most likely result in a different definition of what we call youth. Um, right now, what we know to be true from the data we have available to us, um, a lot of our individuals who are engaging in violence are, um, in the city of Madison specifically, or anywhere from age fourteen, um, to our usual highest average that we're seeing is around thirty-three. And so knowing that we'll have to kind of redefine, right, what we categorically call as youth, some define it as under eighteen, where we do recognize, we know that that's, we've got to meet a population that's above that. Um, and so I think we'll be a little bit more open to our definition and open to the interpretation of quote-unquote youth.
Okay. Um, and we might need to add sixty-five. There's some old gangsters out there that we might have to.
We will keep an eye on that.
We might have to, uh, provide services for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have additional questions, or is your hand still up?
Uh, I, I have an additional question. Uh, Ariel, thank you very much, because we've had this conversation, and so I don't want people to think that I did not do my homework. Uh, we have. Um, one of the, one of the concentrations that have been identified, and I, I, I hear, um, mentoring and, um, you know, job opportunities, employment opportunities, I, I hear all of that. Um, but, but, um, will the initiative concentrate on that, um, small group of high-risk individuals that oftentimes we, uh, we cancel out, but they need that intensive concentration and mentoring? Is, will that be a part of the overall umbrella that you're talking about?
Great question. Um, and yes, I can also confirm, you have tried to do your homework, and you have a package coming your way, so you go to the phone button. Um, and happy to continue this conversation offline, too. But, um, I think the kind of more broad answer to your question there is, um, yes and no. From what we know about the data we have currently, and, and let me be clear, we are really working hard to move milestones in the data we have so that we can make the best and most informed decisions we can. Um, we don't really know if this idea of it's a small group of individuals is still pertinent today. Um, we, we know that we have a transient population here in Madison, right, because we are ranked constantly one of the best places to live. And with that, we have to recognize our small group, it may still be small, but that doesn't mean the individuals within it are not changing. And I think we are looking at different ways in which we can predict and better capture that, so that we have a better idea of the individuals that we need to, um, direct our outreach and response efforts to. And so that's really also what we are looking to build and establish and, and strengthen in, um, the amendment that we have for the twenty-twenty-two budget, um, is to really create a system in which we are able to not only just identify individuals who, um, may be ready for that behavior change, or ready for a connection point, um, to support some different decision-making, but also that we have the intervention and support services ready for them, to support them through that process. Um, and unfortunately, right now, right now, we don't have a great sense of how many people that is. Um, and that is something that we are looking into and that this amendment would support, um, so that we have a better sense of what is the comprehensive service that we need to provide in order to meet the need.
Thank you very much, um, Madam Mayor. I am complete.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Carter, did you have an additional question? No. Uh, are there any other questions for staff on item sixty-three? Seeing none, is there any discussion on item sixty-three? Seeing no discussion on item sixty-three, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item sixty-three. And that will take us to item seventy-six, uh, which is reconsideration of Legislative File six-six-nine-four-nine. Um, and I just want to, um, uh, give a small process note on this. Um, what's on our agenda tonight is simply reconsideration. We are not discussing the merits of the item, nor will we be voting on the item tonight. The only vote in front of us tonight is whether or not to reconsider. Um, if the council, uh, votes in favor of reconsideration, this item will come up on the next council meeting agenda, which will be the eleven-sixteen council meeting. Um, if the, uh, council votes against reconsideration, uh, then the item will not come back before the council. Uh, so on, uh, the reconsideration of Legislative File six-six-nine-four-nine, uh, President Abbas, can I have a motion, please?
Who's motion to reconsider?
Second.
Moved and seconded to reconsider. Uh, uh, let's have Attorney Haas speak to us first, and then we'll go to questions for staff.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm, because I could not remember whether President Abbas was on the prevailing side of the motion in the first place.
Oh, that's a really good point, Attorney Haas. I think that perhaps, uh, Alder Conklin should make the motion to, to be sure that we're proper in our reconsideration. So, uh, Abbas, if you'll, uh, withdraw that, that's withdrawn. Um, Alder Conklin?
Um, I would like to make a motion for reconsideration, please. I will second, if I'm allowed.
Yes, thank you. All right. So moved by Conklin, seconded by Martin, uh, to reconsider. And thank you, Attorney Haas, for, uh, clarifying that. Um, now, questions for staff. Alder Carter?
I don't have a question. I just want a roll call vote when it's all said and done.
Absolutely, Alder Carter. Um, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, uh, is there any, Alder Conklin?
Uh, um, this might not be the right person's, um, justice. Is he staff, or?
Oh, uh, my apologies, Alder Conklin. You are absolutely correct to take me back to that. Um, yes, I'm sorry, I'm doing a bad job of keeping us in order tonight.
That's okay.
Um, on item seventy-six, we do have one registrant in support, Justice Castaneda of District Fifteen, available to answer questions. Uh, so the proper order is, are there questions for our registrants? Alder Conklin?
Yes. Um, I don't know if you guys know this or not, and I think Justice might want to speak to this, but he did send us all an email. Um, there was a little bit of confusion, so maybe he wants to speak on that now, Justice. Is that correct?
Um, am I on?
You are.
Uh, my understanding of the rules here, and the city attorney can attest to this, I think we can talk about it if you guys do reconsider this. We can talk about it at the next city council meeting. I just, because of the gravity of this and because of the importance, I think there's been a number of things throughout the night, uh, that I think actually speak to this motion. Um, but I, I really think, you know, in respect and deference to the, uh, importance of a common council, that the full council, to the degree that we're able, and I know it's really hard to get twenty people together, but, uh, when we have these kind of conversations, it's really important for the full council to be there. I think all you guys bring significant intellectual and professional prowess to the discussion, and that if there is a way for all of us, Alder Lemer, who I have a great deal of respect for yourself, who I have a great deal of respect for, it'd be good to have you guys part of this. So I think the motion to reconsider is appropriate. And so I, I think that's the right answer to that. I, uh, we can talk about, when, if this does pass, we can discuss it when it comes back, and I can talk more to the email and such. Uh, I don't know, uh, Madam Mayor, if there's more I should say. I, I just think that in the spirit of what we're trying to do tonight is really just about the reconsideration.
Uh, yes, uh, Justice, thank you. You are absolutely correct. All right. Are there further questions for our registrant? Seeing none, then we will try again on questions for staff. Seeing none, then is there discussion on the question of reconsidering item, uh, Legislative File six-six-nine-four-nine? Seeing no discussion, uh, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Well, I just really wanted to say, um, you know, since I asked this to come back for reconsideration, because I wasn't at the last meeting, um, I just think we've already made these points clear throughout the whole night. Uh, Justice already kind of touched on that as well, is that, you know, we, we, we got to stop referring everything to every other council and every other committee and things like that, and we really need to buckle down and focus on what our main job is here, and that is to really be precise on what we're doing and, and where we're directing our time and our energy, you know, our, we just have so little time as it is, and to keep referring things or moving things back, or, you know, placing it on file, I think we need to be specific on what we're doing in each committee, and make sure that, you know, these committees aren't overloaded at that, and that we have ample enough time to...
But Alder, I'm going to stop you, because you're starting to get into discussion of the item.
Okay, apologize.
The question is, is just on reconsideration.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to stop then. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Martin, on the question of reconsideration?
Yes, um, I just, um, heard from, uh, someone who had registered, and I don't know, Ankita Bahadwaj. I'm sorry if I slotted your last name, but said that she had, had registered in support of this item. I just got the message.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Vice President Martin. I did refresh, and, uh, in fact, Ankita Bahadwaj, um, is, uh, registered. Is there any objection to taking, uh, public comment? Seeing no objection, uh, Ankita, uh, is registered in opposition, uh, from zip code five-three-seven-one-three, wishing to speak.
Thank you for letting me speak. I hope everybody can listen to my voice. Hello?
Go ahead.
All right, perfect. Um, I just heard from the quote-unquote left of the city council, um, earlier tonight, that we keep wasting time on similar, like, same literal topics over and over again, um, and how that is like, not in favor of democracy, and not in favor of, uh, logic and whatnot, and here we are yet again, in case of an Islamophobic, very Islamophobic and xenophobic and anti-immigrant, um, topic. I really cannot believe that Madison, being quote-unquote so liberal, cannot even listen to its own Muslim population, to its own black and brown folks who are Muslims. They talk about Black Lives Matter, but apparently black Muslim lives don't, and brown lives don't. So that's kind of a little bit of a surprising thing for me. Um, and I'm really disappointed in the quote-unquote left of city council, which honestly, at this point, is not left, because most of the things that they do are very politically driven, in my opinion, and this is coming from a socialist. So shame on you. Thank you.
Okay, are there questions for our registrant? All right, seeing none, we're back to discussion on reconsideration. Uh, seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote has been requested, so all of those in favor of reconsideration, aye. Uh, those opposed, no, as your name is called. I'll remind us that this is an eleven-vote item, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Curry?
Yes.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Yes.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Martin?
Aye.
Thanks, Vice President. Um, Alder Miyazi?
No.
Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Viterver?
Aye.
Alder Rahelier?
No.
President Abbas?
No.
Alder Alboras?
Aye.
Alder Benford?
Aye.
Alder Bennett?
Yes.
Alder Carter?
No.
Fourteen ayes, six noes.
With fourteen ayes, the motion to reconsider passes, and Legislative File six-six-nine-four-nine will be back before the council at the eleven-sixteen council meeting. And that, uh, is the remainder of the items that were separated, uh, for discussion tonight. Uh, wish, uh, happy birthday to my fellow Scorpio, Alder Foster, and, uh, turn to Alder Conklin for a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, uh, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Uh, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment?
Happy birthday to you, too, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, President Abbas. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.